So you may see that pop up. I hope you'll go ahead and approve that. Thank you. And we'll, we'll probably have some more joining us as we go through as well. We have King County Commissioner Jonathan Lack here with us today to present on de facto parents. So thank you so much, Jonathan and Commissioner Lack. And we appreciate you being here today and I will hand it over to you.
Hi, everyone. Hi, everybody. Thanks for logging in and just additionally, thank you all for the work that you do. The King County Courts particularly right now are just slammed. The, the judges are working fifteen to twenty hour days. The commissioners are working twelve to fifteen hour days, sometimes longer. Coming in on the weekends to keep caught up and it's a nightmare. I, I know you all are doing exactly the same thing, while hopefully not working more than seven, seven and a half, eight hour days, depending on your county. But we would be completely unable, the courts would shut down without the facilitator. So I just wanted to express my thanks to all of you for the work that you do. I also, for those of you who don't know me, I've been a commissioner. Here in King County for about four years. Before that, I was a commissioner in Thurston County for just about six. And then I was in a similar position with the King County Superior Court, or excuse me, the Superior Court in Anchorage, Alaska. Of yours. I teach at Tacoma Community College in the undergraduate paralegal program and was recently taught family law, U-Dub. That being said, if you have questions as this is going on, for those of you who know me, I will never remember. Like forty-five minutes from now, what I was talking about forty-five minutes ago. So if you have questions, just either put them in the chat box or the group is really frankly small enough that if you just want to unmute and interrupt me, please do. I am not the end all be all of de facto parenting. As always, if you have questions, you can address them to me afterwards. If stuff comes up and you want to just email me or hopefully your local commissioners or judges can help you too. Don't be afraid to ask us all the questions. Alright, so what are we going to learn about today? Well, so the first important part is learn about the origins of the de facto parenting in terms of the case law that generated it. Ideally, we'll review the types of situations from which de facto parenting cases arise. So you can see kind of common patterns and you'll be able to easily identify them. Be able to better assess the factors to establish a basis for a de facto parenting. So that way you make sure that if somebody comes in and they says they want, you know, petition A, you can say, well, you know, based on what you're telling me, you probably need petition B instead. Learn the unique issues that arise from de facto parenting. Because this is case law and because the logistical circumstances that go into creating a de facto parentage case. In, in terms of the family that is coming to the court. There are some unique issues arising from them and it's important to kind of keep those in the back of your head in terms of remembering. How to deal with them. And then the big confusion, I think, is that people get de facto parenting and third-party visitation statute or non-parental. Visitation statute. Mixed up and there's a statutory reason for that. And there's also a case law reason for that that we'll go over because the statute changed after a Supreme Court decision. That we'll talk about. Alright, so who can be a de facto parent? Generally, what we are talking about is these are the, the basic scenarios. There's a married couple, the wife gets pregnant. By a boyfriend and the husband raises the child. The boyfriend is not on the birth certificate or maybe even be on the birth certificate. It doesn't really matter. And everybody holds out little Johnny as the husband's child. As you probably all know, in Washington State, a child born during the marriage presumed to be a child of the marriage. Irrespective of who the biological father is. This sometimes can happen the other way around. It's just going to be very rare because of kind of the, the way male and female plumbing works. But theoretically, if a man, a husband gets his girlfriend pregnant, the girlfriend has the child, the father takes the child. Hopefully without dispute and then the wife raises the child as her own. Then we could be talking about in fact, a parent. But that child is probably not presumed to be the, the mother's child. The wife's child because the child was not born of the marriage because it was born of a third party. These cases largely run out of, come out of same-sex couples. Largely before the existence of legalized same-sex adoption or legalized same-sex marriage in like two thousand and twelve. But the scenario is there's a bio mom or a bio dad and the other partner. There have been updates to the artificial insemination statute in, in Washington State and the. Egg donor statutes and, and how those work. And so the, these scenarios are less likely to occur now that same-sex marriage has been legalized and the. Surrogacy statute have been updated. For example, if there was a bio mom, two women, a bio mom carries the child. The other spouse or partner would not be biologically related to that child in a same-sex couple scenario. There are, there were a lot of kind of quirky things that happened before the legalization of same-sex marriage in Washington State and. The rest of the country, for example, people to make sure that both parents had a connection to the child. One would be essentially the bio parent and the other parent might be the, the. Birth parent to give both parties standing to have custody of the child. The de facto parenting statute kind of alleviated that need or not statute, but case law kind of eliminated that need. I'm a single parent, you know, they, somebody gets pregnant, has a child. During the pregnancy or shortly after the pregnancy, they start dating somebody else. That person, you know, is living with them. When the child is born or shortly thereafter and ever says, you know, little Johnny is this person's child as well. That's another scenario. Stepparent in large part won't be a de facto parent, but there is a part of possibility that a stepparent. Could be a de facto parent and that's probably in the scenario similar to what I was talking about, the single parent. Somebody gets divorced or isn't married, has a child. And then there's a subsequent marriage shortly after the birth of the child, kind of pre-toddler stage. And everybody assumes that the new husband or new wife is the parent of the child. For those who aren't familiar, polygamy while illegal is not in, it does exist. And in cases where there's been a polygamist marriage, somebody might have two wives, two husbands, three wives, four husbands, whatever the scenario may be. There could be two husbands and three wives all in the same group. Those extra non-biological parents may also be a de facto parent. Similarly, there's throuples. If you're not familiar with that concept, two women, one man. Maybe they're not married, so there's no bigamist or polygamist relationship. But you know, three men adopt a child together type of thing, all three could be de facto parents. Excuse me, if two, two gay men, for example, adopt a parent and they're a throuple, the third person is not on the adoption paperwork. That person could be also a de facto parent. Alright, so it all comes from case law in a case called in Ray LB. And if you want to read the cases, so one fifty-five, Washington, second, six seventy-nine, two thousand and five is when it came out. Again, just kind of a footnote, this is pre same-sex marriage in Washington State. Though same-sex marriage was legal in other states at the time. It's kind of a long read. It's not particularly difficult to read. And I think if you're, are going to be handling these types of cases on a regular basis, giving it a good read through is probably not a bad idea. So let's talk about the facts of the case. In nineteen eighty-nine, Paige Britton and Sue Ellen Carvin began dating. And living together. In nineteen ninety-four, they decide to have a child. Paige Britton is the biological mother of the child. She's also the birth mother of the child and she's artificially inseminated by a friend. Whose name is actually in the paperwork. Sue Ellen Carvin is not related to the child biologically or legally. Because Paige and Sue Ellen are not married, the child born during the. Relationship is not presumed to be a child of the relationship because the parties couldn't legally be married at the time. And she is not the biological child, she's not the biological mother of the child, nor is she, was she the birth parent. She does not also adopt the child. Some of the scenarios that you'll see, large same-sex relationships pre two thousand and twelve. Was if there was an artificial insemination or folks had a, essentially a sperm donor. In these cases, the non-biological parent would often go and do a adoption. So that way both parents would be on the birth certificate and there would be an adoption. So that's one way that the problem was solved pre same-sex marriage. In two thousand and one, LB is six years old and Britton and Carvin separate. So during the first six years of LB's life. The parties lived together. They were kind of a Leave It To Beaver type of family. They shared parenting responsibilities. Both parents were on all school records. They were all on, on doctor records. You know, the daycare center, emergency contacts, you know, everybody was listed as a parent and frankly, all the paperwork. Both parties provided care for the child. Both parties were financially responsible for the child and contributed to LB's growth. So then. They separate, Carvin and. Britton separate and Carvin files suit asking for essentially either a de facto parentage. Or in the alternative third-party visitation. So the commissioner dismissed the ruling, dismissed the case. He basically said that Carvin lacks standing under the Uniform Paritage Act to file a claim. You're not the legal parent of this child, therefore you cannot get visitation. As you all know, commissioners are not the final word in anything. We're rarely even the second to final word in, in cases. And so there was a revision hearing. Carvin took it up on revision. The Superior Court Judge in that case said, there's a substantial relationship between the petitioner and the child. That neither party is an unfit parent, which we'll talk about why that finding is important minute. And that terminating their relationship would be harmful to the child. And so the judge on revision basically said, yes, there's a relationship between Carvin and the child and they are entitled to have contact. But he said, this isn't third-party a, a visitation statute. So he said, it's not third-party visitation, it's something else and Carvin gets to see LB. So Britton then appeals to the Court of Appeals, Division one. They agreed that there was lack of standing under the Uniform Paritage Act. So people who are not the legal parents have no right to file for visitation. Under the Uniform Paritage Act in Title twenty-six. They've said that however, when there's a lack of a statutory remedy. Then basically we default to what's called the common law. And when states became states, for example, in Washington. They basically, the legislature says, we adopt the common law to the extent it does not conflict with the statutes that we hereby will adopt. And so the common law basically said, and the common law is case law going back to, you know, the beginning of time, as it were. And it said that a de facto or psychological parentage exists separate and distinct from the uniform parenting act. So the Court of Appeals basically says that the Uniform Parenting Act doesn't apply. But the common law, the case law that we're going to adopt here in Washington State. And we're going to crib from other states, particularly Connecticut and New Jersey, is good law in Washington State. And this is how you address cases that don't fall into the Uniform Paritage Act. They also said that the claim was not an infringement on the parental rights of a fit biological parent. So there, they were saying that, you know, Ms. Britton was a fit parent, but in spite of her being a fit parent. You could still have the ability to come in and seek parental rights of LB. And it would not be a violation of, of Britton's rights as a parent. The Court of Appeals also reinstated the third-party visitation claim. They said that there was a third-party visitation claim that could be brought by Carvin. And they remanded to the Superior Court for findings in terms of a third-party visitation claim. However, Britton appealed. Let me back up. The Court of Appeals then establishes a test to determine when a. A de facto parentage exists. And the first part of the test is the natural or legal parent consented and fostered a parent-like relationship, right? So if the biological parent or the legal parent says, yes, this is the other parent, I want you to call. I want little Johnny to call you mom or dad or mama or data or is, or papa. Then, and, and I hold you out in that manner to the public, then that's one of the factors. The petitioner and child live together in the same household. And so if the parties are raising a child together. But somebody lives in the house across the street, then they don't qualify. I have a friend, he and, he, he, he's gay and he has, his best friend's a lesbian. And they decided to have a child together. They did it the, the expensive surrogacy route. Or in vitro fertilization route through a doctor, they realized that spending a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars on having a child was a lot of money. So the second child they had, they did it the old-fashioned way, like they do on the Discovery Channel. And so, but they, for child number one, but for the father in that case adopting. The child and going through the court and doing it kind of illegally. They had not done that. Those parties lived in different households. They, even though they decided to have a child together, they lived in different households. And so because of that, they would not qualify as a, a de facto parent. The petitioner assumed the obligations of parenthood without the expectation of financial compensation. So, you know, if you'll remember, most of you are probably too young to remember. A television show called Different Strokes, Mr. Drummond had taken in, he had a daughter of his own and he adopted two, two children. Mrs. Garrett was the housekeeper and, and, and care provider for the children. She was being paid to watch the children. And so because she was being paid to watch the children provide care, she could not be a de facto parent to the children. The petitioner has been, has been in a parental role for a length of time sufficient to have established with the child. A bonded dependent relationship parental in nature. So the fact that you live together for, you know, the boyfriend moves in for a couple of weeks and then you throw him out. A couple of weeks is probably not going to cut it. Six months, depending on the age of the child, may be long enough. You know, a couple of years is probably going to be a, a clear, a clear demarcation of how long that is. I, you know, a question comes up was how long is a sufficient time and it's going to depend case by case. So the reason LB is important and we talk about unfitness. Is because many of you are probably familiar with a case called Troxel versus Granville, which went up to the United States Supreme Court in two thousand and twenty. In Washington State, we had at the time a third-party or non-parental custody statute. That allowed essentially grandparents to file and get visitation, a stepparent. You know, to, to get visitation with a non-biological child. And the Supreme Court said that was an unconstitutional infringement on parental rights. They basically said that before you can assign parental rights or visitation to a non-legal parent. You have to find that those parents, the legal parents, either the biological or legal or adoptive parents of the child are unfit. And without an unfitness, then it's presumed that those parents have the ability to make decisions. In the best interest of that child and, and, and essentially regulate their contact with third parties. The Troxel and Granville case is a really important family law case. Excuse me, the scenario is that. Man and woman are living together, they have, they're married, they have a child, the husband dies. Up until the time that the husband dies, the paternal grandparents were writing, you know, care like many paternal grandparents do for the child. And after the husband dies, the mom is like, well, you know, I still want you to see. Baby Troxel, but not as much as you are asking for. And so when that happened. The Granvilles then filed a lawsuit asking for parenting time. And because the mother was not unfit, the court was unable to do so. So Justin asked a question in the chat box. If nanny was paid to watch child, the dad divorces and remarries nanny who was paid to watch the child. Would Danny's stepmom be disqualified from a, a de facto a parentage claim? So I, yes, they would be because the relationship was established while they were being paid to get that relationship. It does not mean that that nanny slash now stepmom upon the divorce of the father. May not be entitled to third-party or non-parental visitation in the, the statute that we'll talk about shortly. Alright, so after the Court of Appeals rules. Britton then appeals to the Washington Supreme Court. And the Washington Supreme Court said, we thus hold that henceforth in Washington, a de facto parent stands in legal parity. With an otherwise legal parent, whether biological, adoptive or otherwise. So if we find that parent B is a de facto parent, then we essentially say they are a parent. And the reason that finding is important is because we don't have to find then that parent A is unfit. Because parent B is a parent and the law allows us to. Resolve disputes between parents as to where the child should be, visitation, you know, decision-making, et cetera. Alright? And so they basically are aware that Troxel's out there. And so when the Washington Supreme Court issues this decision in two thousand and five, preempts a Troxel type of claim by saying. A de facto parent is a parent and therefore we don't have to find, make a unfitness finding. This has not been tested upon appeal to the United States Supreme Court. So the third-party visitation statute is unconstitutional. And Carvin had kept up this, if I, not the de facto parent, then I want visitation. Under the third-party or non-parental, non-parent visitation statute. And this Washington Supreme Court said that no, non-parent or third-party visitation is unconstitutional. And they applied Troxel to the statute. So the only way. Carvin can get time with the child is through a de facto parenting plan. And so then what happens is it comes back from the Washington Supreme Court, they have determined that. De facto parenting exists and it gets remanded to the Superior Court, who then determines whether or not Ms. Carvin met the standard. Under the Court of Appeals standards here. The four points standard as a de facto parent. And if they did, then LB and, and Carvin would get to spend time together. Alright, so that's the case law. And the reason it's difficult. For a lot of people to understand this is because you're looking in the statute books, you're looking in the revised code of Washington for something and there's nothing there, right? Which is common in family law. The case law kind of overwhelms the statute in many places and this is one where there is no statute. It's strictly case law. I think the big place that people get confused on de facto parenting is the similarity it has to the third-party visitation statute. So as you know, Troxel overturned and said that the third-party statute in Washington was unconstitutional. Three or four years ago, the Washington Legislature took it upon itself to try and. Redo the non-parent or third-party custody visitation statute in Washington to try and make it constitutional. The author of that legislation was Senator Jamie Peterson, who represents downtown Seattle Capitol Hill in the state legislature. He was actually one of the attorneys on the LB case and, and he represented. He submitted amicus briefs on behalf of essentially Mother Carvin in that case. And so he has a strong familiarity with the, the scenario that led to the issues to the LB decision. So who can file a. For non-parental or third-party visitation? Well, it's a person who is not the parent. And the reason this is important is because if you're a de facto parent, you can't file a third-party visitations or non-parental visitation. Petition because you are a parent, a de facto parent is a parent. It's kind of like saying. I'm the adoptive father of the child. The word adoptive is almost irrelevant. Because adoptive father and father really mean the same thing. Parent and, and de facto parent theoretically mean the same thing. So what are the statutory factors for a non-parent or third-party to file for visitation? The petitioner having a substantial relationship with the child, right? So grandma who is provided free of charge daycare for the child. A step, a subsequent stepparent who's had a long relationship with the child, when they're divorcing. The biological parent might be somebody who has an ongoing and substantial relationship with the child. The petitioner is a relative of the child or a parent of the child. And so. Generally, what we're talking about is aunts and uncles, grandmothers, grandfathers, cousins, those type of people. The child is likely to suffer harm or substantial risk of harm if the visitation is denied. The scenario that we're talking about often is, you know, one parent goes to prison, one parent dies, one parent falls off the face of the earth. You know, moves to Antarctica or whatever it is. And that parent's family wants contact with the child, but the other parent is saying no. And so they can come in and file for what's called a non-parental visitation. And the factors, the person established the relationship through interaction, companionship and mutual mutuality of interest and affection. Without the expectation of financial compensation. I actually had one of these cases a few years back where the stepmom file, you know, there's a subsequent divorce, stepmom files. For the divorce, she also in the petition alleges that she wants a third-party visitation or non-parental visitation. The dilemma is the father had been giving her a hundred dollars a week to pay her to watch the child. And he had all the receipts and the, the cancelled checks. So she was not entitled to her claim. Because she was actually being paid to watch the child, paying your, your, your wife to watch the child. The stepchild is a way of getting the other parent to reimburse you under the child support statute. Because daycare expenses are reimbursable by the other parent. So what essentially mom and stepdad, or excuse me, dad and stepmom were trying to do was. Essentially hose or get some, suck some extra money out of the bio mother. By having the stepmom be paid to provide daycare for the child. And then when stepmom tried to file for a third-party visitation, she wasn't entitled to. Because she had claimed that at her time as daycare. The other thing is the non-parental visitation statute does have a definition of what substantial continuity. Is and the de facto parentage statute does not. And so. Non-parental visitation statute requires that the connection be for at least two years. And if the child is less than two years, essentially half the child's life. So a six-month-old child, we'd be talking about three months, nine-month-old child, four and a half months, et cetera, et cetera. So it has to be at least two years or half the child's life. That's under two. That clear line does not exist in the de facto parentage case law. Hey, look at that double slide. Sorry about that. Okay, so we are going to take a quiz. And I have the chat box open so I can see it. If you, I'm going to give you all some. Scenarios from, I'm going to call it real life. For those of you who do not believe in the force, you may not believe it's real life. But I'm going to ask you to answer in the chat box whether or not this is a de facto parentage. Or a potential third-party non-parental visitation case. The first scenario. Does anybody know who these people are? Alright, it is Beru and Owen Lars and they have a child named Luke Skywalker. Does anybody have an idea on who? Whether or not Owen Lars or Beru Lars would have the. Ability to file non-parental or visitation if Luke Skywalker's father, also known as Darth Vader, said they couldn't see the child anymore. Anybody? Anybody? Bueller? No? De facto, no.
I've never seen Star Wars. Sorry, I have no idea.
You're not welcome to these trainings anymore.
I know. I was told I was un-American in college when I divulged that information, working as a barista.
You are never. You are never ever going to be able to understand my presentations if you don't understand Star Wars. So, so who is on the parenting plan? So there is no parenting plan. The father, as we know, is Darth Vader, also known as Anakin Skywalker. The mother is Padme Amidala, who is deceased. Um, and so the dilemma that we have here is the Darth Vader never places the children with Beru and Owen Lars. Um, and so it's not with his consent. He did not hold them out to be the parents of the child. They held themselves out to be the parents of the child, but Skywalker, Anakin Skywalker, Darth Vader does not. And therefore this, if Darth Vader wanted to file for, you know, wanting the child back and Beru and Owen Lars wanted a visitation, they would have to file into the third party visitation statute. All right. The next couple. Does anybody know who these are? All right. These are Briha and Bale Organa. The little girl on the left is somebody we know as the future Princess Leia. All right. And does anybody have an answer whether or not this is third party visitation? Or is this de facto parentage? All right. It is not de facto. Again, um, so as you know, Princess Leia and Luke Skywalker are brother and sister. The mother is dead and the father Darth Vader. He does not place the child with and Bale Organa. Instead, essentially the child is kidnapped by the equivalent of DFYS slash Obi-Wan Kenobi, who places the child with Senator Organa and his wife. So if Darth Vader files and says, I want my kids back, Brayha and Bale will have to go and ask for third party visitation. So does anybody know who this is? Much like Cher, she only has one name. All right. This is Ray. And her parents are of course murdered. And she is placed with a essentially junk trader Unkot Plut. And does anybody have any idea whether or not Unkot Plut would be able to do de facto parentage or third party visitation? This is a trick question. Ms. Vanderwall, wonderful to see you, but you are wrong.
Of course.
Herbaphil, wonderful to see you as well, but you are wrong as well. And the reason for that is because Ray's parents are both deceased. So this is technically should be a CPS case with DFYS stepping in as a dependency.
Okay, but doesn't it matter who's on the birth certificate, whether they're biological or not? Because how many times have we seen mom put her current boyfriend on a birth certificate, even if he's not biologically the parent?
So for you all, the dilemma with that is you now have a two step process. You need to first, you know, this is Texas two step folks. You need to first file the petition to just establish paternity. And it can either be done by the bio mom or the other parent, other parent on the birth certificate or the other presumed parent. If there's a mess up on the
So what happens when the kid is four and they've been on TANF and the state's gonna object?
That means there's got to be exceptional cause, I think, at that point to overturn the birth certificate. Tell people to get their stuff done.
Sorry, I worked in dependency court and give you all kinds of scenarios.
Absolutely. And the, the answer to that is they need a flux capacitor and a DeLorean. All right. So if it's Obi-Wan Kenobi and Anakin Skywalker, is this third party custody? If Obi-Wan wants visit or third party visitation, or is this non parental custody? Anybody? All right. So the scenario is Anakin Skywalker is actually living with a Shmi Skywalker, his mother. There is no known father. Uh, she actually discusses that she doesn't know how she got pregnant. She was just pregnant one day. Um, and then she actually turns the child over to Kenobi. The critical question here is, you know, let's assume that Kenobi holds himself out to be instead of his teacher, his, his dad. You know, is the Jedi paying him? If the Jedi is paying him to train Skywalker and it's his job, then no, right? He's received financial contribution, so it's not a third party of visitation. Um, and then the question is whether or not he's being held out as father. So my guess is because of the age of the child. You know, the whole idea of non of de facto parentage is that essentially the child knows you and only knows you as a parent. And so this is probably not a scenario where either qualify. But what about Anakin Skywalker and Chancellor Palpatine? So Anakin essentially turns to the dark side. Chancellor Palpatine takes him under his wing. Again, this is another one. Mom didn't consent to it. He's never held himself out to be the father. But what about Ben and Obi-Wan Kenobi and Luke Skywalker? Essentially the same scenario. Owen and, and, and Beru Lars are essentially murdered and he just takes the child in. So the answer to this is if you are just kind of a mainstream casual watcher of Star Wars, there are no scenarios where it's a de facto parentage. However, if you're a freak, then you probably know this young lady. Her name is Nash Durango and she appears in Star Wars Young Jedi Adventures. This is her parents. The biological mother on the left is never named. The other mother, her name is Chris K R Y Y S. And the, if these two parties were to separate, Nash calls her this person mom and calls Chris mama. And so if these parties were to separate, uh, she is probably a de facto parent of Nash Durango. All right. So that's the for the day. I did ask our wonderful facilitators here in Seattle if they had specific questions. And so I've done some de facto facts to go through here. Is it similar to an adoption or guardianship? The answer is no. Um, an adoption or guardianship is, hey, um, we've got this scenario and we need somebody to step in and be the legal parent or legal guardian of this child. A de facto parent is somebody who is essentially effectively been the child's parent, and we just need the court to confirm that. Why does a petitioner need to request a request court for review? And the answer for that, and if you've seen the form, it's a, I don't know if you can see on the screen here, I'll show you on my video. There's an order after review of petition for de facto parentage. It's Form FL Parentage 344. Essentially, this is the equivalent of an adequate cause order. And so you ask for court review. Most of the time, my guess is this is going to go on a commissioner calendar. Um, and the court finds, yes, the petitioner has made a prima facie case and then it's going to be set for trial. So just think of it as essentially out of cause in de facto parenting. So what constitutes holding out and, and the, the case that talks about holding out as parent? And the easiest definition is one that says the legal parent and the de facto parent both present child, uh, present to the child and to the public that they're that the de facto parent is the legal parent of the child, meaning is the child, is the de facto parent on school record, doctor records, are they in the family Christmas card, that type of thing? So what constitutes a significant period? Don't get caught up in the visitation statute that talks about two years or half of the time, if it's less than two years. It really will depend on the circumstances. You know, a, a parent who's in the military in a, you know, kind of traditional sense of, of what we call a family who might be gone for significant amounts of time is still the parent, you know, if, if a parent is in the middle, de facto parents in the military is in Afghanistan or Iraq for months at a time. You know, it doesn't mean that they, that, that, that essentially the, the, that time that they're in Afghanistan doesn't count. However, in other scenarios, it may count if there's not a bond between the child, you know, it's not a end all be all decision. It's a part of the factors. Can you re-explain at some point why a step parent does not qualify as a de facto parent? So a step parent may qualify as a de facto parent. And usually that is going to be a case where the child is not you know, is of an age that they're so young that when the step parent comes into the life, they are the only person who knows they're the only person they think of as the, the, their mom or dad. You know, they're, they're bio parent plus the step parent. If you're 14 years old and you have a step parent, you know, the dilemma is you are not the parent from the outset. You had that 14 year old has two parents and that step parent, when they you know, parent A is really probably looking under the third party visitation statute. I hope that Ms. Romero, if that answers the question. Okay. Can there be two more, more than two respondents? If you're not familiar with what a throuple is, that's somebody who has potentially two more spouses than I have. I have none. Or if you've seen the movie or television show Big Love, uh, where, you know, the Bill owns, um, Bill Paxton's character owns a row of houses. Um, and he's got like five wives and each wife has a different house and they all share a big backyard. All those wives theoretically could say that they are mom to all the various other wives, uh, children. And so they may, there may be more than two respondents. Do parenting responsibilities include financial support? So I would not say that they are exclusive. So we're not in a situation where, oh, you're the stay at home parent and took care of the child, therefore you didn't contribute financially to the child. And therefore you can't say you're a de facto parent. That's the equivalent of saying a stay at home parent didn't, you know, buy milk and, and, you know, Lunchables for the child, and therefore they should have no time with the child. That's just not how the, 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 the reality of the situation works. And so if you are contributing financially to the child, that's a factor, but it's not dispositive if you do not. This is a requirement that one of the parents foster, uh, support the relationship. Yes. And so if the idea, and this connects back to the holding out question that is earlier here in the facts. You have to basically say that I, I want the public to believe that my partner is the biological or legal parent of this child. And so they have to foster that relationship just because they stop doing that at some point is not a problem. And that's probably why there is the dispute there in court because A is saying, you know, I'm mad at parent B and, and, and now you can't see the child anymore because you're not the bio parent. That's essentially the genesis of these cases. So in section 20 of the petition, there's a ability to request child support. Um, and it's the same as there's a parenting plan or a dissolution case. A de facto parent is a parent. Therefore, if you are a de facto parent, you have a financial responsibility to continue supporting this child after the demise of the underlying relationship between the parents. There can also be a name change. You know, this scenario is going to be where, you know, mom has a child, the child or is pregnant. You know, the, the father and the mother have no relationship. The father disappears. The mother has a child, she's then marries somebody else. You know, short, during the pregnancy or shortly after the birth of the child. But the child is given mom's name, last name, and you know, the de facto parent wants to be on the, the birth certificate and wants to have the child have, you know, hyphenated name or their last name. And so you can also do a name change. You can also get a change to the birth record. Um, and this is really comes out of the same sex marriage relationships. Where the birth record would not necessarily reflect prior to the adoption of same sex marriage in Washington state. The birth record wouldn't reflect the de facto parents of the second parents. Uh, parentage. And so you can't actually correct the birth, uh, the birth record to reflect the contribution of the birth, uh, the de facto parent. So how long does it take for a de facto parentage case to resolve if the court determines to proceed? It's going to vary court to court. In King County, you're going to get an 11 month trial scheduling order. Can it be in conjunction with the guardianship? So, you know, anybody can file anything at any time, but probably not. The exception would be is if the child is now over 18 and we're looking at a adult guardianship. Um, and no de facto parenting had ever been established. You might want to file parentage and the guardianship at the same time. But that's really for inheritance purposes and whatnot. The easier answer is tell people to go see a estate planner. Can temporary orders be issued? So this is unresolved law as far as I am able to tell. I think probably not because even though you're, if you are found to be the de facto parent, you are the de facto parent from the time, you know, of birth essentially, then but until you're found to be the de facto parent, uh, we, you, you don't have any, any ability to have visitation. That is my gut feeling. Um, I would talk to your commissioners and judges about that. Maybe they'll allow a temporary order or just tell people to file the motion for temporary orders and let the judge figure it out. Why is child support ordered if the de facto current becomes the legal parent? In large part because de facto parentage cases are filed when the, the parent and the de facto parent have separated. And so because they've separated and they're arguing and all that, then we need financial support for the child. When a de facto parent is established, does it terminate the parental rights of the other parents? It does not. Um, and that's why there can be more than, there can be, you know, bio mom, bio dad and de facto parent as well. So it doesn't terminate the parental rights of the other parents. All right. So we're a little early, but frankly, I couldn't figure out how to stretch this out any longer. And since we're not actually getting CLE credit, um, some of you might want to eat lunch, but I'm happy to answer questions as always. My dog Jin knows nobody else as her father. I am the only one who's represented as her father and her mother willingly gave me up, so I am her de facto father. Any questions, complaints, concerns, Star Wars questions? Happy to answer.
I always have questions.
All right, then I'll try my best for answers.
And I actually had this kind of happen and she was going back and forth. So stepmom and bio dad separate, they're getting divorced. She, the child stayed with stepmom in the beginning by agreement. He was giving her money in lieu of child support to take care of his kid. Is that accepting a wage? But there was nothing in writing yet.
Yeah, you know, so um, I think there's a difference between being paid to watch the child and having the bio parent cover the reasonable expenses for the child, right? If, if I'm going to come live with you and my mom is going to say, I'm going to pay all of Jonathan's expenses. Plus I'm going to give you $500 a month. Then that's a clear no, but I think there's an argument to be made that if all, all my mom is doing is saying, you know, Jonathan's going to come live with you, Becky, and I'm gonna, you know, here's a credit card, everything he eats, put on the credit card every month, that's not you being paid. You're not, you're not receiving anything from that because you're spending all the money you get on, you know, putting food in my mouth. Right?
Okay. So if they are separated and de facto is found, do you, it does the parenting plan order of support go into the de facto or into the divorce? Or would you do a motion to consolidate?
So I would probably do a motion to consolidate, but I don't actually think that most step parents, um, you know, is the underlying other parent still involved in the child's life? I think that's going to be an important factor.
The two I did know.
Yeah. And so
You don't know.
Yeah. And so the dilemma is that it, it, you know, you have to determine whether or not this is a non parental visitations claim that's being made by the step parent or the step parent is really a de facto parent. And if, for example, the child knows to parent, you know, uh, mom and, you know, we see these cases where people say, um, you know, my, I'm going to call my bio mom, mom, and I'm going to call my stepmom mama. You know, they know there's a difference, you know, that the child didn't come into the picture with the step parent until the child was six. That's a visitation, probably more of a visitation case. The child understands the distinction between the mom and the stepmom. So it's probably not a de facto case. It's probably a, a visitation case. The de facto parentage cases involving step parents really are cases where the step parent steps in shortly after the birth of the child. Either, you know, because parent A disappeared or parent A, you know, goes off to prison or you know, the, the Chilkote Charlie's kind of thing. What happens in Vegas stays in Vegas and we don't actually know the name of the bio father. All we remember is that he left his, you know, cell phone and on the nightstand. Then that scenario, we're probably talking de facto parent. Other questions from anybody? All right. Well, if there's no other questions, I'm going to let you get 15 minutes for lunch. And hopefully I'll see all, if not most of you on, I think, September 13th, where we'll have a whole day with other people, but the last most exciting hour will be with me on contempt. uh with other people, but the last most exciting hour will be with me on contempt. So my number's there, my email's there. If you have questions about this or any others, please uh don't uh hesitate to reach out. Oh, there's a bunch of new questions in the box. Oh, just thank yous. All right, um, thank you all.
Thank you, Commissioner Lack, and I'll go ahead and stop the recording.